Good evening. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, August 6, 2018, to order and recognize that we do have a quorum with the Licensing Board here tonight. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have five items on tonight's agenda, starting out with item number one is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the Licensing Board of July 23, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number two is a temporary Class B beer and wine license for the American Legion for the Second Annual Tanner U Car and Bike Show being held at the parking lot of Tanner U, 2368 West Washington Street on August 21, 2018, from 5:00 PM through 8:00 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number three is approval of operators' licenses, and the list is in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number four is appointment of Agent Ben Houli for West Bend Sausage Plus Incorporated. Sausage Plus located at 11, excuse me, at 11135 West Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second, but that address is wrong. It's not 11135.
Should be 1135?
Yeah.
Cut me a little bit, too.
You've got it on the license that way, but I know it's 1100 block in there.
Gotcha. Sausage Plus.
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number five is an operator's license for Brenton Butler, and there'll be a presentation tonight by Chief of Police Ken Moeller. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. The police department, it's check, found the incident from February of 2017 in Oshkosh, in which Mr. Butler was stopped for operating auto while intoxicated. He had a PBT of .18. He also had a loaded handgun in the car, was charged with possession of a, or going armed while intoxicated. He also had open bottles of, two open bottles of intoxicants, bottle of brandy and whiskey in the car, and he had prescription pills. Rather aggravated circumstances. In March of 2017, he was found guilty of the operating while intoxicated and going armed while intoxicated. So for those very recent convictions in what I consider a very aggravated case, we are recommending denial of this license.
Thank you, Chief. Is Mr. Butler here this evening? Sure, if you don't mind stepping up to the mic and letting us know what's on your mind. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. That, yes, I had that incident. That's the only thing on my record. It was dropped to a misdemeanor. I had no jail time, did a year of probation, no revocation. Have been passing it, haven't gotten any, not even a citation since, or any other type of ticket with my provisional bartender license. I have had no altercations in the bar. I have not had, you know, any other issues. And my boss, the owner of the Aranda, is, can also vouch that I am one of her best bartenders. And I have made other changes to where I am a solid and full-functioning citizen in this community. Other than that, I would just have to say, I know it sounds very bad, but please don't hold that against me. And that's all.
Okay. Thanks for coming forward. What happens tonight is the Licensing Board makes a recommendation to the City Council. The Council will be doing their business here in the next few minutes tonight, so regardless of what comes out of Licensing Board, the Council actually makes the final decision on this. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Butler or the Chief? I've entertained a motion on the item.
Motion to deny.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Be no further business before the Licensing Board. I adjourn.
Thanks, Craig. I'd now like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have two items on tonight's agenda, the first being the minutes from the regular meeting from July 23, 2018, at 6:25 PM.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or changes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Second item is to award contract 18-04, crack sealing of pavements at various locations, with a presentation by Max Marcel. Max?
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight I come to you with consideration to award contract 1804 to do some crack sealing work in our streets. We opened the bids on July 27, and we received four bids that are listed on your memo. I made some calls because American Pavement Solutions, who's the apparent low bidder, has not worked in the city before. I contacted five communities where they performed similar work in 2017. I received responses from three of them, very positive. And therefore, tonight I would ask you to please award the contract to American Pavement Solution for the amount listed in their bid for work actually performed, and the amount is $46,960, as well as a contingency fund of $2,540, about 5.4% of the bid. We had built up the contract with four alternates in order to be able to select groups of streets in case we would come up with unit prices higher than we anticipated. However, all the bid prices for this contractor came down that we can't actually afford to do all the streets that we wanted to do this year.
All right. Thanks, Max. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Max, is this the kind of, we do this every year?
We
Same kind of work?
We pretty much try to do this every year in order to prevent road degradation by filling the cracks when the roads are almost new or still new enough. We avoid water infiltration and with the freeze-thaw cycles, damage to the road. So we try to do those as much as we can on newer roads to preserve them as long as we can.
Sure. Okay. So did we do the same kind of, we did the same kind of work last year?
Last year, we did not. We had bid the contract. However, the bid prices came up too high, and we could not fit the contract in the budget that we had. That's why this year we separated in various groups of streets in anticipation not to do any work at all this year.
Yeah. I'm just concerned as low as that bid is compared to the other ones, you know, if we, have we had, have we had numbers like that in the past?
Yes.
I guess is what I'm looking for.
Yes. In the past, there was one company that was coming much lower than anybody else. It was not this company. It was a different one, and they were winning the bid every year. And it was always the same range of comparison where they were coming at a dollar 13, I would say, a pound, and then everybody else was at a dollar 50, a dollar 60, a dollar 70. So we've had that in the past, and we've had good results, though. So I anticipate the same with this company.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Max.
And I have to say, this company was the only one that actually came to our counter. I know they went on-site because they came to the counter and asked me questions about specifics of certain streets and how to handle the job.
Okay. Awesome. Great. Thanks, Max.
Any other questions?
Yes.
John?
Yeah, Max, I think you answered my question there. I was going to ask if all four contractors did look, check out the areas that were needed crack filling, and some of those prices are just unbelievable. Was a crack filling that bad? But you just said that American Pavement was the only one that went and did some research on them?
They were the only one that came to our counter. I believe two of them called asking for some information, clarification on the contract language, but they were the only one that actually came and discussed the job in detail with us.
Okay.
So I'm guessing maybe with getting a better idea of what the job entails, maybe they were able to tighten their prices a little better?
And you mentioned that you checked with some communities that have used them in 2017. I know that's only a year, but crack filling, I know, is pretty, it's not something you just put down and then just move on, because if you don't do it right, that crack filling is going to come out within a short period of time. I would have liked to have seen something like two or three years down the road to just see ones if, and I don't expect you to do this, but next time, if possibly just a mental note, if you get some areas where they've had two or three years of crack filling done, and it's still like is excellent shape, then I wouldn't be a little reluctant, which that's a low bid, but
Sure.
The city of Marshfield had them under contract for five years, and they renewed their contract for another five years, and they've been very satisfied. So they've done work in that community for a long period of time, and the community was willing to hire them again, lock them down for another five years. Aknamog and the city of River Falls have told me that they had done work prior to 2017 for them as well, and all of them have said that they would hire them again.
Okay. All right. That's what I wanted to hear. Thanks, Max.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll let somebody second that first. I'll second. Sure. All right. Max, I was just going to ask, since we're getting a pretty sweet deal here, I mean, is there any chance, are there other, is there other work that needs to be done that we can kind of, you know, kill two birds with one stone, or?
I
Flexibility in that?
I think with this price, we've reached our budget. We maximized our budget that we have to do crack sealing this year.
Yep.
So obviously, if we do have, I'm about to close some other contract like Eighth Avenue, and then see if we have some additional PMP funds, we may be able to do some things, but we have to remember that under the contract bidding law, we only can extend this contract so much. And the contingency that I'm asking right now is only 5%. So that's about how much more I could push the envelope on that.
Got it. Thanks.
Any other questions? Craig?
You mentioned Marshfield under a five-year contract. Is that something we've considered in the past, or something we could consider going forward if these guys will?
That is not something that we have considered in the past, but it is definitely something that we could consider in the future.
Thanks, Max. That's what I figured. It'd be interesting to ask the question, and I'm not that educated in it. Will they lock a price in for five years, or they'll lock in a, you know, an inflation rate or something to it so that we would, I'd assume we would know exactly what our exposure is going to be?
I will definitely have that conversation with them, and when I call them, to tell them if the award goes, or if it doesn't go. And then, you know, we'll have the pre-construction meeting. We'll have them on-site with us for, you know, a few weeks. So we'll definitely have that conversation with them.
I think anytime we can take a variable out, and you know, at least for the next three, four, or five years, whatever it is, what that exact number is, a little easier doing the budgeting than
Sure.
Than going in with a roll the dice every year. Thanks, Max.
Anybody else? I do have a motion and a second, so if there's no more discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. And I now adjourn the Board of Public Works.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, August 6, 2018, to order, and recognize that all eight aldermen are here this evening. Item number one is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of July 23.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Items two through five are under the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number six is approval of the appointment of election officials for 2018 and 2019. Looks like we had three folks, I think, on that list.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number seven is discuss and review Board of Public Works and Finance Committee structure. Rich, would you like to kick this off? Something that we've kind of toyed around with and talked about a little bit on and off over the last five or six years or so, and wanted to bring it forward for thoughts from the council.
Correct. So something that's kind of been going through my head a little bit, and I had raised it to Craig to see if there was any interest on his part. We thought it'd be good to bring it in front of the council. So as you know, right now, we have Board of Public Works, and we have the Finance Committee meet at every one of our Common Council meetings, basically. And we'll go through those committee meetings, and five minutes later, vote on the same topic, again, really with no changes or any time to do any type of real diligence into the issues that are happening. So one of the ideas that I had that was going through my head was, it'd be nice to get some citizens involved on some of these committees, some people that may be experts in both finance and public works to come and help us as we make these decisions. And it also puts us in a position where we can operate more like a committee structure, where, you know, kind of like the Safety Commissioner or some of those things, where there's a meeting of that group, and there's time to have discussions that would be outside of the standard norm that we have for our current meeting structure. So in thinking about it, I thought, why don't we split the Common Council into two groups? One that would be on Public Works, and one would be on Finance Committee, and at the same time, split the meetings so that we would have the Board of Public Works, maybe the first meeting of the month, and the Finance Committee on the third meeting of the month, or vice versa, whichever works out for some of the budgeting decisions that we have. And then allow the mayor to be on the committees, and allow for, again, some community members that could be, help us in our decision-making process. Obviously, everything that comes out of those committees is advisory only, so it's not like they're making policy or doing anything like that. All the decisions would still have to come through the council. But I don't know, Craig, did you want to add anything to that, or?
I think you summed it up. Point I like is that we really don't act like committees. I don't know how often the Public Works Committee, actually, I do know how often the Public Works Committee actually went out to Public Works and took a tour and, you know, looked at the vehicles we might be recycling or getting rid of. That answer's never. And getting, having the opportunity to possibly get in on those committees, some subject matter experts. I can see, you know, a municipal finance professional being on the Finance Committee and giving us some real-world advice, maybe a benefit, or someone that is into heavy equipment purchases, or something maybe good to have on the Public Works Committee. So I think you summarized it well. If, in the last couple of meetings, you know, tonight's a good example. We had, you know, one and a half items on Public Works, and we didn't have a Finance Committee meeting. So if we alternate those once a month, I think it's a good opportunity. If we have heavy agendas, we can always have them both times a month, or twice a month. One other thing, sorry. Ian dug into the code real briefly, and I think it's pretty open as to what those committee structures look like.
Yep. So there is a statutory default for Board of Public Works. We've already are outside of that. We've already opted out of that. In the memo are the, how it's laid out for Board of Public Works and Finance Committee, so that's our local ordinances. So we have flexibility at this stage. It's not something like Police and Fire Commission or Plan Commission where it's tightly regulated.
Chris?
So to avoid, Rich, one of your, excuse me, one of your concerns that you were talking about with, you know, we would vote on, like we do now, we vote on one thing, and the next thing right away is on the Common Council. So in that scenario, if Public Works is meeting to discuss something on the first Monday, do those topics, then not get talked about in Common Council until the next Common Council meeting, because otherwise, you're going to run into that same scenario.
I think you can. However, at the same time, it'd be nice to have, the ability to have, you know, meetings outside of that norm.
Yeah.
Where you guys can actually, the finance people can get together and talk, and it's easier to get four people together than it is to get all eight, or a quorum of this group, so.
So there's four folks, plus maybe a couple citizen members that can then be answering the questions that the balance of the council might have on those same weeks. But I think the goal is to be able to ask and have a little bit of a dialogue back and forth. Maybe, tonight's a good example, be able to ask ahead of time on, what does a five-year plan for crack filling look like? We'd be able to have those answers at the council meeting. Mike?
After reviewing this and thinking about it for a while, I think at the end of the day, it's probably a really good idea to have, like you said, some expertise involved rather than just relying on the council members to be a part of this. So the additional information that's available from potential community members who have expertise is really powerful. The only downfall I see is the shuffling around of the seats and things like that, but that's really minor, minor details in the big picture of things. I would agree with Chris that I think that the action, or the potential action items would be beneficial to let sit for two weeks then, and not take immediate action on them immediately following those specific meetings. Let the council have them to think about for a couple weeks, and then take action on them.
And I think some of the items, non-time-sensitive ones, I think it'd be pretty easy to do. There may be some, you know, ancillary things that we do, just a normal course of business that are sort of rubber-stampish type stuff that could take place that same evening.
But you are thinking the meetings would essentially coincide with the regular council meetings? Again, they wouldn't fall on a different day or a different time?
Correct. What we thought right now is that the standard meetings would stay. So you'd have a Board of Public Works on, like we said, one of the meetings, and a Finance on the other. It would be up to that chairman to decide if there were topics that needed, you know, additional time to discuss with the group, you know, like the mayor said, with a field trip out to some of the areas, or, you know, if we had to get, you know, more finance people involved from the city for questions. Those would be held on and off, off time.
Thank you.
I think all we're looking for is a smile and a nod, and there's some, you guys would draft a new description of what those, the committee and the, if it makes sense to you guys to take a look at. We'll still have a chance to review what that structure is if you want to be thinking about, what's your favorite, trucks or dollars? Think about, think about that a little bit. And I think it gives us all an opportunity, really, to focus on if you're really into the public work side of things, you're really into the finance things, really get your arms around that a little bit, too.
I'm in support, so I'd look forward to seeing some documentation, or some further information about how that would be laid out and what it looks like.
All right. Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Item number eight is an operator's license for Brenton Butler.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Could we do a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Christian?
No.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
No.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Maddel?
No.
Alderman Kissed?
No.
It is a tie.
In the event of a tie, mayor makes the final decision. Mr. Butler, could you come back up to the mic, please? We take these, as you can tell, we take these matters pretty seriously. We put a lot of faith into the police department, into the background checks that they do, and being able to know people.
Yes, sir.
I can't begin to guess what you're doing drunk driving with a couple old bottles of booze and a loaded gun, and some prescription pills in your car, but I put a lot of weight into the fact that you came here and kind of fell on the sword and stood up for yourself. I'm going to vote that we do give you your liquor license, and we're going to trust that you're not going to be back here. We expect that you go out into the world and do just what you said, be a stand-up citizen, contribute to the community, contribute to your place of work. I wish you good luck, and again, I hope we don't see you back here.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Oh. Oh. Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the liquor license, or operator's license, excuse me. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Okay. Let's take another roll call vote.
Alderman Butchlick?
No.
Alderman Christian?
Yes.
Alderman Chevalier?
No.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman Caston?
No.
Alderman Hugaster?
No.
Alderman Maddel?
Yes.
Alderman Kissed?
No.
Motion tied.
No, it's five to three to deny that motion.
Did Roger understand what the motion was?
Yes.
You voted no two times, two different questions.
Did you want to approve the license, Roger?
No.
Okay. Then it would be a yes vote, because the motion is to approve right now.
Well, so his vote to say no is correct. His vote last time to say no was incorrect.
Okay. Gotcha.
Young man, your license fails. I'm sorry. Steve, if you could handle item number nine for me, please abstain from discussion and voting on the item.
Item number nine, approval of purchase and parking agreement for city of, I'm sorry, for West Bend Medical Group, and a presentation by City Attorney Ian Pross.
So the, we approved an offer to purchase for this parcel of land, which is immediately east of the Dublin's, former Dublin's property, for the West Bend Medical Group. They have assigned the offer to CBC Medical Holdings. That's why you see a different name on these agreements. These agreements, or the sale of the land is contingent upon us, or the city entering into a developers' agreement and a parking easement for the property. That's the two documents you have in front of you.
Oh, geez.
So these are the, kind of, the final step for council prior to moving forward with the sale. The site plan for the site is up at Plan Commission tomorrow night, and once that's approved, we would anticipate closing on the sale of the property for a dollar, but closing on the sale of the property in the fairly near future after that. The developers' agreement covers primarily the valuation guarantee, which will help, because this isn't a TID, so there is a minimum amount of development that we require, and we are selling them the land for a dollar in anticipation of them building a, at least a one and a half million dollar building, or building that will be valued at least one million, one and a half million dollars. The agreement also addresses the environmental remediation. The site was purchased through the RDA for blight remediation. Part of that was some environmental remediation. We hope and anticipate that a lot of the funds are going to be offset by a program known as PECFA through the DNR, and the city will serve as the conduit to submit the remediation costs to PECFA to have that work done. That's very similar to what we're doing with Quam Engineering right now. The rest of the agreement is basically the legalese. Essentially, with this one, the primary, the primary goal here is that they develop the land. I don't think there's any concern that is, as long as they develop it, it's going to have the million and a half valuation. And as long as they develop it, this, and once the remediation is done, this agreement would then terminate. This isn't going to be as much of a longstanding one as some of the others. And then, the parking, or access and parking easement does have or access and parking easement does have, dedicates a good portion of the lot as public parking all the time. There is provisions that allow them to designate up to 52 parking spaces as solely for the clinic's use during business hours. So outside of business hours, those would revert to public parking. We did agree, and this is primarily for maintenance purposes, that there would be no long-term or overnight parking. Because it's a business, it's going to be really difficult to do snow removal and other types of maintenance if there's cars parked all over the lot in the middle of the night. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. We do have similar language regarding special events as what we have in the MOA agreement. I don't know that there's going to be the same type of special events there, but it would allow them, for instance, for a grand opening or something like that or a wellness fair to close off the lot with, with notification and approval by the city. They would, the, the medical group would be responsible for maintenance of the lot. We do have some indemnification language in there just because it is public parking and they are essentially taking on a public purpose through that. So we're agreeing that if there's liability that should arise outside of their negligence, that we would indemnify and hold them harmless and defend them for that, which we would have to do with that parking lot the way it is right now. So if anybody has any questions, we can go through it. Yes.
Ian, the maintenance of the parking lot does not include snow removal? Just?
It does.
It does?
They're, they're responsible for all maintenance of the lot.
All the maintenance.
They, they own the entire parcel. They're responsible for all the maintenance. It's just the, the snow removal, we're saying no parking overnight so that they can get somebody in there at 5:00 AM.
Got it.
Or whatever to remove the snow before business hours.
Okay. And then the, the, the parking, public slash private parking in one parking lot, the, the West Bend Police Department is potentially going to be involved then if there is parking issues where the?
No different than any other private business. I, I mean, it's going to be signed. And, and part of the reason, you know, we were discussing, as you can see, because they're kind of hot off the presses, we were, we've been kind of discussing different aspects of this. One of the comments that was made by the medical group is they don't want to block off 50 spots immediately when they're not going to use any of them. So it's, it's the 52 spots is definitely something they grow into, but it allows them the flexibility to mark off what they need as they need it. And it kind of controls and, and gives them more flexibility about where the people enter as well. I don't think the site plan was part of this, but you can look at it on the Plan Commission agenda. You'll see there, there's some, some handicap spots at the top of their building and some on the side. So they'll obviously want access from both, both avenues. So.
I'm, I'm well aware of the both pros and cons to the public parking situation in, in the downtown-ish area. So.
Yep.
I just want to defend it where I can and, and understand what the ramifications are of losing some of those spots.
Definitely trying to balance those in this agreement.
Cool. Thank you.
And for reference, I believe it was 128 spots, something like that on the parking or on the site plan as it stands right now. As expansion happens, that may decrease, but with the current site plan that's being approved or up for approval, it's 128 or somewhere around there, total parking spots. So this is, what, leaves 70 spots for public parking at all times.
Any other questions for Ian? If it's not, I'm sorry.
I've just got one, Ian. I know we talked a little bit about it before. I see in the developers' agreement where it's binding to the successors, but I don't see one for the parking that says it's binding to the successor.
If you look at number 10.
Gotcha. I missed that one. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
It also notes that it's a perpetual, not exclusive easement.
If there's nothing further, I entertain a motion on the item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Steve. Item number 10 is closed session. Entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statutes, section 19.85, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is regarding a purchase agreement.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion second. Stephanie, if you could do a roll call, please.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Christian?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Maddel?
Aye.
Alderman Kissed?
Aye.
We are in closed session.
And we will be coming back into open in a few minutes. We are back in open session to address item number 11, decision regarding purchase agreement.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Under reports, item number 12 is a report by Alderman Hugaster regarding the Park and Rec Commission meeting.
We met on the 26th. Couple of things we went over. We had a $4,000 donation from the family of Janet Kane. Memorials for Kenny Park Maintenance and Improvement. Costero Group, $5,000 for sponsorship of the 2018 Dirty Ninja Mud Run. The Villa Park, the organization that's up there, that lives in the area, they're going to be building a shelter on the weekend of the 10th coming up. The 4th of July apparently went very well except for the monsoon. The Dirty Ninja Mud Run, they had 2,000 entrants this year, which was 470 above last year. And they usually have same-day registration, which they were unable to do because they had too many people there already. Rental facilities in the parks are going fantastic. Most of them are already full up for the rest of the year. Some improvements going around Quas Creek. They're going to be doing some touch-up work on the buildings and some new doors. Riverside Building, they're going to be doing some new paints, some new windows and doors. The Geo Cash Event is scheduled for this weekend, August 10th and 11th in Regner Park. And then the two big things, Milwaukee Bucks and West Bend Mutual, along with the Boys and Girls Club with the donation of the Multi-Sports Court in Regner Park. And tomorrow, I believe, is the groundbreaking for the work on the Carl Crossfield.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Item number 13, a report by Mayor Sedanico regarding the Roots and Branches Mayor's Beautification Awards. Actually, if you guys have those awards, welcome to announce the folks from your district. If not, we'll do it again. If you could keep it on the agenda item next time, Stephanie, if, I'm not sure if everyone's prepared tonight. Right. Typically, the alderman will announce who actually won from their, their particular district. So if you've got your stuff, great. If not, keep it on the agenda for next time too, Stephanie. That'll be good.
I've got to turn my mic on.
Anybody have their stuff?
Yep. I would like to congratulate District One, Joe and Sue Billman. I stopped by, talked to them. Really nice-looking front yard. So congratulations.
In District Two, we would like to congratulate Donald and Bonnie Gruber. I have not been to their yard, but I do plan on making a stop by and personally congratulating them as well.
And congratulations to District Three's winner, which is Bruce and Katherine Gilmeister.
And I will congratulate District Four, Bill and Mary Balfour of 1708 Sylvan Way.
And I will congratulate multi-time winner, I think this is the second or third time, Gary and Jane Seymour from District Five on James Court.
And I will congratulate Carrie Von Canell for District Six at 2020 Hemlock. I drove by. It looks very nice, but I will be stopping to talk to him personally.
And I'd like to congratulate John and Sandy Supa on Patricia Road in District Seven. And I did stop by today and they, man, that is a beautiful yard. Good job, babe.
We stopped and looked at ours and I sent them a letter, congratulated them and invited them to come to the meeting where we're going to have for the awards are handed out.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. Congratulations to all the beautification award winners this year. And being no further business before the Common Council, I adjourn. Are there any announcements tonight? How's your daughter doing?
She's doing good.
Good? That's why you're chuckling. One quick announcement. I know that assessments went out this week. First time we've done a reevaluation in the city since 2011, I believe, 2011. There's a big difference between your assessed value and what your tax bill will be. So just stay tuned, keep listening, keep paying attention. I'll say that if your home went up in value, that's a good thing. The challenge for us is to make sure the tax rate, the tax rate is adjusted appropriately so your taxes don't change nearly as much as hopefully your assessments did. Anybody else have anything to add to that? Have a great evening, everyone. Good night.
Night.